It is now six thirty-two. I'm going to bring this meeting to Longdale City Council along with the successor agency to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give the go.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Pollan Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
I'm going to ask Pastor Matthew Harbison to lead us in inspiration. We're missing somebody here.
Flag salute.
We're going to do the flag salute as well, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Cuevas to lead us in the flag salute. It doesn't say, okay.
Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and a God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Just like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. I apologize for the shorts. I'm now my daughter's soccer coach, so that's where I just was. I made it here at the last minute. Let us open in prayer. And thank you, God, for our opportunity to gather today to conduct city business. We thank you that we have a city, that we can participate in the dialogue. These doors are not closed. There are bombs not going off. We are able to be here. We are able to be civil. We are able to demonstrate democracy, and we thank you for that. I ask that you would keep the members on the dais safe, that you would keep them from any harm, that they would be well, that their bodies would be strong. Ask the people who come and speak at this mic would be able to have their voice heard, that they might be, that they would know that they are heard, and that they would be able to be civil, and that we would be able to continue to run the city in a way that reflects a positive example of how cities should be run. And may we continue to do this, keep us safe. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Harbison for blessing us with the word of God tonight. Thank you, and that inspiration. Let's move our agenda. Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Captain Palomino, who give a report.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for November eighteenth through December second. And so I'm going to start off by discussing some of our notable arrests and investigations. So on November twenty-second, at approximately two-thirty a.m., deputies Gallegos and Rodriguez were traveling south on Prairie Avenue at Rosecrans Avenue when they conducted a license plate check on a Kia Forte. The license plate inquiry returned to one lost or stolen license plate. They conducted a traffic stop of the vehicle, and Deputy Rodriguez noticed wires hanging from the dashboard on the driver's side. They detained both occupants, and the driver admitted to having a firearm inside the vehicle. Deputy Rodriguez searched the vehicle and recovered two firearms. Both occupants were arrested for weapons possession charges, and they were not residents of Longdale. And then on November twenty-sixth, at approximately ten p.m., Deputy Gutierrez conducted a patrol check at one-four-six-zero-three Ocean Gate Avenue and contacted a male adult who was loitering in the rear parking lot. He immediately recognized the male from previous contacts and knew he was on probation with search conditions. Deputy Gutierrez searched the male and recovered a bindle containing methamphetamine from his left front pants pocket and a firearm from his right front pants pocket. The suspect was arrested for weapons and narcotics-related charges, and he also was not a resident of Longdale. And then regarding our traffic-related incidents, approximately forty-seven citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. And then lastly, the Coffee with a Cop event is scheduled for December fourth at nine a.m. at Sprouts Grocery Store located at one-four-four-one-one Hawthorne Boulevard. Everyone from the community is invited and encouraged to attend. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Okay. Are there any questions of the captain's report? CNN, thank you, Captain, for the, just, thank you, Captain, for that report.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, let's hear from the Los Angeles County Fire Department with an update.
Good evening, Mayor Pollan Miles, City Council members, and residents of the city of Longdale. My name is Battalion Chief Ramon Valdoria, representing Los Angeles County Fire Department. I'm here to present the stats for LA County Fire's response into the city of Longdale. Total responses for the city of Longdale was a hundred ninety-four. Of those responses, a hundred twenty-eight LA County Fire provided advanced life support or basic life support. Good intent calls, which include wires down, public assist, totaled sixty-six. There was a total of three fires in the city of Longdale. Our members were able to keep property loss to three thousand dollars. No residents were displaced. None of the fires involved persons experiencing homelessness as well. Also, I'd like to add that our advanced provider response unit had four calls in the city of Longdale for the month of November. End of report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the Battalion Chief's report? CNN, thank you, sir, for that report.
Thank you.
We are now on oral communications. If you'd like to speak to the Longdale City Council or the successor agency on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your turn. If you come to the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. Just simply approach the podium after the person who the procedure has concluded. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the redevelopment agency or the city council? Yes, sir.
Hi there. My name's Andrew Blackney. I'm resident of Longdale. Of course, I'm sure you all know me. I was very disheartened that I couldn't be here to give comment on last city council meetings talk about the traffic study for One Hundred Forty-seventh Street. And I was also extremely disheartened at much of the discussion that didn't take place based off of what was in the traffic report. I hope that all of you get a chance to read it. And with that, I brought some of it and gave it to you guys, along with other information such as the manual for setting speed limits based in California and some information about traffic volumes from the Federal Highway Administration. Setting a traffic speed limit is not just involving measuring the speed and deciding off that. There's other practical matters that need to be taken into effect, including pedestrian activity, the density of the driveways in that road, intersections, and whether that road is rural residential or a developed area, along with other considerations. The report that was done only took into account speed and the eighty-fifth, and using the eighty-fifth percentile rule in two areas, it judged that the speed limit in those two areas should be, would be around thirty-one miles per hour and twenty-two miles per hour. Let's just take the average of that for the whole street, and that would put us at twenty-eight and a half miles per hour. And taking that, taking that into consideration and following standard practices, that would mean that the speed limit on the street should be set to thirty miles an hour and not the thirty-five miles an hour that the street is currently set to. That's one portion of this. Second portion of this is that this report shows peak traffic volume in, on the street, and it shows peak traffic volume on the two areas studied. At worst was four-hundred-and-sixty cars an hour and four-hundred-and-seventy cars an hour, which according to the Federal Highway Administration falls well, well below the traffic volume for two lanes in each direction. In fact, it's about a third of one lane in each direction, which is why the traffic study said that there should be, that there should be an alternative design. In fact, they provided you with four alternative designs, and that was not discussed at all. And that's important because the street is, the street is too fast, and there's too many lanes of traffic, which causes incidents with pedestrians, that the study also showed. In fact, the study showed five incidents involving pedestrians. That is well above the standard for a residential street, which is about twenty-eight percent. That's about fifty-five percent, showing that this street is extremely unsafe, which you would also know because it's been spoken about at many of these city council meetings. It's not taken into account anywhere in this report about that. So I hope you would ingest the report, read it fully as I have, and come to the conclusion that the report came to, that the street needs to be redesigned. Thank you very much. I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Frank Tullivera. I just wanted to show my appreciation for the city officials that have reached out and offered their support. I don't know if I was part of the fire report that the chief just gave, but as some of you already know, my house burned down last Wednesday on the twentieth. And I just want to say that I wanted to thank you publicly for reaching out to me, your phone calls, or people that came to the house while we were there, and the family, friends, and neighbors especially. The neighbors came out and immediately offered us, we ran out with nothing. So they immediately offered us shoes, flip-flops, and blankets, and coffee, and hot tea, and it just makes me proud that soon I'll be sitting up there with you as the next city council member. So I'm even more proud to be part of the, this board, and, and I just wanted to give my appreciation to the first responders, to the police that were up there, the sheriff, and then to the firemen for helping us out, being there with us, American Red Cross, and other, other officials that were there. So thank you very much for, for everything that you guys have done for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Also, I was a bit baffled by the report we got from the fire department tonight. Really no mention of a major fire, of the most serious house fire in recent memory. Sadly, there were several houses involved, and my sympathies to those families involved, but fortunately, no one was injured. Although the, although the exact cause of this tragic, tragic event that displaced so many people might not be known at this time, Longdalen should consider the hazards of the electrical panels that service their households. Outdated and recalled electrical panels not only pose a big fire risk, but can prevent you from getting homeowners insurance. Insurance inspectors are requesting upgrades before they insure a property. These include panels by Federal Pacific Electric, Zinsco Panels, GT Sylvania Panels, and Challenger Panels. Fire has always been a concern of mine. According to the Longdale General Plan, in addition, higher-density areas are of increased concern due to large number of people residing within a concentrated area and the potential for fires to spread from one structure to another, which is what happened here. Longdale is one of the most densely populated areas with LA, within LA County. Development of the city has resulted in small lot development with multiple structures on single lots and narrow streets. Emergency access is limited between the closely spaced structures and along the narrow streets that occur throughout the city. On-street parking, especially during the evening hours, further restricts the access and maneuverability of fire equipment. Due to the nature of the development that has occurred, many structures do not meet current emergency access requirements, again from the general plan. That is why enforcement of permits and building standards by Longdale is so critical in mitigating any potential fire hazards. Without the permits and inspections required, there's no assurance that a home improvement project was completed that would guarantee a safe home. Failure to comply and should a fire or other disaster occur, there is no guarantee that insurer would cover the damages to any illegal structures. Then spending my first Fourth of July in the city of Longdale, I've also had a concern with the fire hazard presented by illegal mortars landing on my rooftop and smoldering into a full-blown fire or the close proximity of dwellings. I do not recall the council as a whole seriously considering the risk fireworks brings to Longdale property alive. Accidents do occur in something like a house fire. Whatever the source will have devastating financial results. I've argued before council for years to protect residents from the potential risk of fire and lung disease from fireworks to no avail. Due to the nature of the development that has occurred, many structures do not meet current emergency requirements, again from the general code. Here is an issue noted in the general plan that council can actually take to protect the safety of the residents by banning the use of all fireworks, legal and legal, legal and illegal. Enforcing a permit in building standards is also critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Matthew Harbison, Longdale Westland, wanted to say thank you for the Neighborhood Watch that was put on over here in the community center. I know some of you weren't able to make it, but members of the community who were there, Sheriff Department, we, we thank you for just having that opportunity to gather, and I want to encourage you to continue to provide the space and the time so that community members can get together to do that. I know in the past it had been based on an individual's organization, maybe like at a church or something, and if events came up, it didn't happen. So hosting it here gives it a central location and a regular time. So I appreciate that, and I'd like to just encourage us to continue doing that. I also know we have the Angel Tree lighting. I believe that's this Friday, I believe. And I'm hoping that maybe in the future, maybe something was just missed in the emails, but I know in the, the Halloween, community outreach reached out, hey, do you want to run a booth? And obviously, it's for the trick-or-treating and things, but I was wondering if there was community involvement for the, if there are booths needing to be staffed or things like that. And I had not received an email on that, and from what I saw in the past, it was mostly a city thing, and the community was more part of the Halloween. And I was just curious if organizations can just be present to be part with the community for that. And perhaps I just missed an email, or it just wasn't sent out, but it's something that I'd like to be able to be a part of perhaps in the future. So thank you for what you do, and I'll, I'll be there on Friday anyway. I just, yeah, next time, maybe I'll be at a table.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm going to close public comments from the city council and the successor agency and bring up the dais. Any comments from the panel? Councilwoman Cuevas, you have anything?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Randall, thank you for the information. If we could maybe put it on our city page, Sean, is that something we could do so that we could inform our residents about their panels?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that and see what we can do in putting something up that's related. I think we probably have something from LA County. We could, and we can download and put it on there similar to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will be all.
Okay. Ms. Hoffman-Gorman?
Thank you again for everybody that has come out to speak and spend your evening with us. It's, that's pretty important that we all take an active part in the, in the running of our city. So Randall, thank you for the info, and I would second that, Mr. City Manager, on if we could get that out to the, to the residents. Matthew, I think you know where I stand on Neighborhood Watch. I'm ready to see this thing grow. It is such an opportunity in which residents can come out with the sheriff's department, with the city, and to discuss those nuisances that are happening in all of our neighborhoods. The uptick of graffiti and all of those things, all of that is near and dear to my heart, and I will continue to be Mike's cheer, Michael's cheerleader here behind him, saying, let's grow this thing, let's get every household knowing that this exists, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kearney?
And I just want to thank everybody that came out to speak. I think it's the first time we had all males speaking. Shocking. Matthew, I want to compliment you on your, on the Neighborhood Watch. Maybe you can get with Jason and see about getting a booth at Angel Tree. Frank, I'm glad to see your family, everybody's okay. We'll get, Andrew, I'll give this to Lucio so he can look this over, and with that, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. Ms. Suarez?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. Andrew, I'd probably want to schedule a follow-up so we can go through it together. And a lot of times, we get recommendations from staff about, you know, they're looking at it, but it really adds an element when we can have the people that are actually living the daily experience of living on those streets, so that I think that's very important. I also want to congratulate Mr. Frank Tullivera, and I'm looking forward to serving with you. I'm very glad that your neighbors jumped in, and I think that's the essence of our community and what, what these families and friends do for each other. And I think the rest, yeah, that's all I had. Passing along. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. I want to thank everyone who spoke as well. Andrew, once again, thank you also for this information concerning the traffic study. I will take a deeper look at it and see what we can come up with, but thank you for this is very helpful. Also, Frank, I also want to congratulate you, first of all, and also, I'm just glad to hear that your family is doing well and no one was injured, and as well as the neighbors. And so that was a blessing that you guys was able to make it out without any injuries, and so I look forward to serving with you. And also, I wanted to add the, yes, the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Watch, we do look forward to that growing. Pastor Harbison, it's, we've come a long way, but we have some ways to go, what have you, to keep the, the city or the residents engaged directly with our law enforcement. So I want to thank you for making a note of that, Pastor, and we will continue to make that Neighborhood Watch grow. Thank you, Randall, for the information about the electrical panels. That is certainly something that is, that's really crucial. You have this information about recalled electrical panels. As you know, in the fire department know that a lot of times, fires can, of course, be the source of over, I don't know the term of art, but overworked, under-updated fire panels, right? And so to have those on fire panels updated when appropriate is definitely something that we should all be aware of. So thank you for this information. Like I said, we'll make sure we get something out to the, to the public on our website that, that's, that will convey that, that information. But thank you once again. And with that, that's all I have. Okay, and we will close public comments and comments from the council. Next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
If there's no additions, subtractions, I make a motion.
Now, there's any additions or subtractions. CNN, the motion's been made by Kearney that we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Cuevas. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, Madam City Clerk?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, very good. And although I did not specify which consent calendar, that was the Longdale City Council Consent Calendar, just so that we're clear, let's also do, have a motion for the consent calendar for the successor agency. What is the pleasure of the body concerning the consent calendar for the successor agency?
A motion to approve.
Okay, there's been motion by Cuevas that we approve the consent calendar for the successor agency and seconded by Mr. Kearney. Any discussion on the consent calendar for the successor agency? CNN, Madam City Clerk? Please vote. Thank you. What happened?
I'm showing, I'm still waiting on Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman. No problem for the successor agency. The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, madam. Next is item H, administration, the city council. Item eight is an award of a purchase of all vehicle, I mean, all traffic solutions. Let's hear the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report you have before you is for the Award of Purchase to All Traffic Solutions Incorporated for the construction and delivery of radar trailers to be used for traffic calming. As this council will recall, in the 2024-25 fiscal budget, this council very generously allowed us thirty thousand dollars to purchase two radar trailers for use to calm traffics in our neighborhood streets and our main thoroughfares. After a bidding process was put forth because of the extent, the amount of the trailers, two bids were received, one from Custom Trailers and one from All Traffic Solutions. A panel was put together of myself, Public Works Director Lucio Rodriguez, and LASD Sergeant Justin Smith. And after considering several parameters, including completeness of the RFP, expertise of the company, and total project cost, the panel decided to go with All Traffic Solutions with a winning bid of twenty-five thousand, eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents for two traffic trailers, two radar trailers. That concludes my report, and at this time, I can answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions of the report? CNN, what is the pleasure, the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
A motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Because motion's been made by Cuevas and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman that we approve from a staff recommendation. Is there any discussion on the motion? CNN, will the Madam City Clerk, will you conduct the vote?
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item nine is purchasing policy, reorganization amendment to authorize the city manager to purchase specific situations. Let's hear the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take care of the staff report. Over the past year, the city manager has exercised his authority under the purchasing ordinance and purchasing policy to trigger cases of emergency. In one case, the gate around the city hall parking lot was broken. Regular bidding was done, and it turned out that when they opened up the gate, additional issues were found that could not be found before opening up the gate mechanism. But the cost of those additional issues took the overall work from one threshold to another. So the city manager triggered the emergency provision in order to keep work going so that the, the gate could be fixed. Second situation came up with city vehicles, very similar situation. There was an anticipated cost. Staff followed the purchasing policy, followed the regulation, or followed the ordinance, but then when the vehicle was being looked at, it, it wound up, it moved up a level. What we are proposing is to lay out more specifically in the purchasing policy, the authority of the city manager to authorize in writing the continuation of work in those kinds of circumstances. And that would only be done similarly to the emergency situation. It would be done because it would be reported back It would be done because it would be reported back to you within 30 days. So it will be made public, you will have the chance to ask questions about it. But it's the kind of circumstance like the ones faced this year where it doesn't make sense to leave, for example, a vehicle taken apart in one auto mechanic's shop and go out and all of a sudden do a reprocurement for that work. In light of that, we're proposing that change. Because we were looking at the policy, we went through and did a general cleanup and an updating, most of which you'll see in the federal guidelines just to meet new federal requirements. Again, some thresholds have changed, some other things, minor things are being changed there. But the substance of the change in front of you is, is just really clarifying the city manager's authority in these kind of rare circumstances so that instead of having to say it's an emergency, it's something that's clearly laid out. That's my report, happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's have some questions on the report. Let's hear from Ms. Flores.
Yes, can you define emergency situation for me? Is it spelled out specifically? Because I couldn't seem to find, you know, the definition or what qualifies as an emergency situation.
Right, there really isn't one in the, in the ordinance. The ordinance just says an emergency is, it, it could be a state of emergency in which case all kinds of purchasing could be done. It could be, you know, an individual emergency, which, again, in this case, it was, we're not going to be able to secure the city's vehicles at night if we don't get the gate fixed. So it's not defined in the ordinance. If we do want to do a definition, that would take a change to the ordinance, which would, we'd be happy to look into that, if you would like.
I'm going to ask that we continue this and actually specifically define what an emergency situation is. For me, the purchasing policy is very important. It outlines, no matter who sits in any of our seats, you know, the process. And for me, the transparency part is very important. So I think we need to outline what qualifies as an emergency, to protect the public.
Ms. Cuevas?
I just have a question. I see a lot of red marks and numbers being crossed out and added, but my question is on page seven, under procurement of micropurchases. It got moved from $3,500 to $10,000. What would that fall under? I mean, what exactly is?
So the micropurchases are a federal regulation, and the federal government has changed its threshold for what micropurchases are. It only matters if you're using federal dollars, and only federal dollars for certain types of purchasing. And because we're talking about the federal government, they think 10,000 isn't a whole lot of money, and so they have a very streamlined purchase.
So that is based on the federal government?
Based on the new federal acquisition regulation threshold, yes. We, we would not be changing those on our own. Those are just changed to reflect the current condition of the law.
And then on 2Z, on that same page, it talks about, we moved it from $50,000 to $250,000 per FAR case? Can you explain that one to me? Sorry.
Sure. The FAR is the federal acquisition regulation. A case is not, like a legal case, it's a decision.
It's just a decision.
A decision made, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So if, if we could bring it back, I would, I would like to put more specification like our colleague requested.
Yeah. Yeah, I have, I have a question on it, too. Thank you, Ms. Cuevas, for adding that. Going back to the definition of emergencies, I do think it does warrant having at least some clarification on what constitutes an emergency, whether it's a definition or illustrations or scenarios or what have you, and if the situation is similar in elements to those scenarios or illustrations, and that could be a good guideline, guidelines for what constitutes an emergency. I'm not really sure if the definitions, unless it's just totally clear-cut. And in some cases, even if it is totally clear-cut, you might be in a box, right? And something that would constitute emergency, but if you have a strict construction of the reading, it may, it may do the opposite effect of what are we looking for in terms, in terms of allowing the, a purchase that otherwise would not be allowed. But I think a scenario or illustrations might give you more of what you're looking for in terms of, but there should be some guidelines in terms of what, what's an emergency, because I'm not really sure. One person's emergency may be something that needs to be fixed right away, but not necessarily emergency, and other cases might be an emergency.
Well, we'll be happy to take this direction from the City Council. We'll plan to bring this back either in late January or perhaps the first meeting in February.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you for that. Are there any other comments? If, if not, we can just, anonymous, just help them to bring it back with those directions. Any further directions anyone want to add? Okay. Thank you for that report. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Public Works. Item 10, which is an amendment to the Agreement of Public Works and City Hall Facility Needs Project. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. In May of this year, the council awarded the Public Works and City Hall Facilities Needs Project to developers General Contracted Inc. The project is ongoing at this time. We are on phase two of the project that moved onto City Hall. The, through the first phase of the project, contractor decided to change their name and organization of the company. Therefore, we had some delays at that time. But at this time, we're coming forward to City Council to change the contract with the new name and also extend the time to cover the full seven phases of the project. It is anticipated that we are going to finish before September of next year. However, to cover any delays or paperwork and things like that, we are asking to extend the contract through September of next year. There's no changes in, in the cost of the contract at all, so it's just really just paperwork at this time. And that, that concludes the report. If you have any questions, let me know, please.
Thank you for that report. Any questions, report, Ms. Cuevas?
I, I thought he was coming for another car. No, my, he answered my question. It was monetary, if there was going to be a increase on the contract. But he already answered that.
Excellent. I only have one question, this directed to the city attorney. I noticed in the paragraph from the staff report, on the staff report, where they're changing from a limited liability company to a corporation. They didn't say what kind of corporation, SC or whatever. Is there any, any concerns with that in terms of liability, anything, since they're going?
No concerns with liability. They will, and this was part of what the director mentioned. As they were changing, they had to change over some of their financials, get new bonds in the new corporate name, et cetera. They already had two people signing because they were an LLC. They'll continue to have to have two people signing. I don't, I don't foresee any legal issues from making that change.
Okay, very good. Okay, that's all questions I had. Seeing there are no more questions, what is the pleasure of the body concerning this?
Make a motion with the staff recommendation?
I'll second it.
So the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the staff recommendation and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Any discussions on the motion? CNN, would the council please vote?
For item number 10, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. The next item is the successor agency item. Item 11, Consideration of Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule.
Good evening, honorable chairman and agency member. This item is before the successor agencies to the Landale Redevelopment Agency. This item is the consideration of a recognized obligation payment schedule for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 and the administrative budget for the same year. In 2011, there was a legislation that ended redevelopment, the Landale Redevelopment Agencies. With the end of the redevelopment agencies, there was still outstanding debt. So this is a procedure set by legislation administered by the Department of Finance, the LA County Oversight, Fancioli Oversight Board. And as the agency member, we, we have to declare a payment schedule for the debts. So the item before you is the payment schedule for this, well, technically fiscal year 2025-2026. So the next step, if the agency approves this item, it goes through the Oversight Board meeting expected for January 14, 2025, and then it goes through the Department of Finance by their deadline of February 1st. Staff suggests that the agency approve and direct staff to submit this report to the Los Angeles County Oversight Board and the Department of Finance for this fiscal year 2025 to 2026. And attached to it in the exhibit is the administrative budget for staff's costs. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions in this report? Okay, what is the pleasure of successor agency members on this item?
Make a motion to go to the staff recommendation.
Okay, motion being made by, by Kearney?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Cuevas. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, Madam Secretary, would you please conduct the vote?
For item number 11, concerning the successor agency, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to defer my time to our CSD Director, Jason. He has an announcement concerning Angel Tree.
Okay, deferring time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Seems like just yesterday, we were cleaning up from the Halloween maze, but Angel Tree is just around the corner. It is this coming Friday. We do have a lot on store for, for the community to come out. It starts about 4:00 PM, maybe a few minutes earlier, if you want to get there earlier, because our first performance should be at 4:00. We have 13, 14 different organizations represented, including LESD schools, high schools, and some of the city's contract classes that will be, excuse me, performing throughout the night. We have trackless train rides, we have letters to Santa, arts and crafts. We're going to have three snow runs, per the city manager's request. We're going to have a snow play area. We're going to have Sitting with Santa and Santa's Sleigh, courtesy of Southway 25. We're also going to have ice skating and the simulated ice skating rink. There's just going to be a whole lot going on, plus the Angel Tree lighting, which I hope is, is going to be a little bit different than in years past. So I don't want to say any more than that. But please, remember the community, and if you've been to Angel Tree already in the years past, we welcome you to come back. It's going to be hopefully bigger and better than ever. We're going to have, I think, seven different food booths. We're going to have a photo booth hosted by Losinger High School and their, their Careers Academy program. Just a whole lot going on on Friday from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to get in touch with me. But I can't wait to see you all on Friday.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I do have a quick question for him.
Yes, ma'am.
What time are we expected to light the, the tree?
Well, I believe that the current schedule is around 5:15, so, as it stands.
Thank you.
I don't like to tell you what time to be there, I like to.
Oh, no, no.
Give it.
Good?
That's good. Thank you, sir. The city manager, does this end your report?
Yes, Mayor and Council.
All righty, thank you. Okay, item 12, Contractors Transparency. Right back. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. The item is a contractors transparency. The California Contractor State License Board maintain a database of disciplinary actions against a contractor. This, this information is available to the public when we, anyone can look at it. So part of community development's procedure is if this contractors transparency is implemented, we would review it, we do it now, but we would, if there is any disciplinary history within the last five years, property owners would sign the building permit application so they're aware of any disciplinary action that a contractor may have within the last five years. So this item was sent back to staff for rewording of the question. So staff looked at it, we proposed several questions. So the questions that we now, we'll update the form if it's approved. It's going to ask, "Do you have any negative disciplinary actions from the CSLB for the last five years?" Staff will look at it. We're looking for honesty on their part, but we're also, if there is history, the residents will know so that they can keep making informed decision. With this, staff recommends that the council considers the contractor parent transparency policy and direct staff to update the city form to implement.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Let's hear from Ms. Flores.
Hi, I had a quick question. We revised it, and the, the negative disciplinary actions means they can, does it include investigations or just final results?
Final results, so.
Just final results? So it was revised to just be, okay. That was my question, thank you.
Okay. I wanted to say, um, thank you first of all for the, the change that you made on the forms. It's definitely clarified some of the concerns that I had on our first reading. But the ideal of this is just a transparency ordinance so that the consumer would be fully aware of those whom they are employing to do contracted work. And so just like with your, your doctor, your dentist, or any other profession, they have a, a board that basically acts as the regulatory agency, what have you. But a lot of times, consumers are not aware of these regulatory agencies or what have you. So I think this would be, be an added layer of protection for consumers. And in terms of transparency, and of course, consumers can then, of course, make consumer's choice, what have you, whether a contractor has had some negative disciplinary actions or not. The consumers can then make that choice. But I think it's important that the consumers at least are aware of such actions or what have you, and they can govern themselves accordingly. So I think it really, it meets the point that I, that I was trying to make in introducing this ordinance. So I want to thank you for making this, that last sentence on here absolutely clear, that we're just looking for disciplinary actions, not just things that was allegations that were made, investigated, and nothing became of it. We don't really need to hear about that. We just need to hear about if there was any type of negative action taken. So thank you for that. Are there any other questions or concerns?
If there's no question, I'll motion.
And I'll second it.
I, I shouldn't let you motion it, but, you know, I jumped on that one.
I like that. So the motion's been made by Cuevas that we approve the, the contract transparency ordinance. Well, not really an ordinance, transparency on policy. And I'm seconded by myself pulling my own. Is there any discussion on the item? CNN, with the council? Yeah, yeah, I almost got lost there. CNN, with the council, please vote. Thank you, madam, I'm the city clerk.
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item, item 13, Reports from Attendance Meetings or Events from the Mayor and City Council Members. Let's hear from Ms. Cuevas.
On 11/20, I attended the Contract Cities Association Board Meeting at the SoCal Gas Energy Resource Center, and I did a tour of their new hydrogen plant and hydrogen house. It's a great program that hopefully they could put together. They were, they received funds from the federal government to continue their research, but they're waiting to see if that will continue with the new administration. Hopefully, that those funds are still available for them. I got to see a stove arranged that had 2% hydrogen, and then there was regular gas in it, and the flames were amazing. And it heats up the water faster, the food faster. So that's what we're looking into the future, adding hydrogen and gas together on our appliances. So I'm hoping that the government doesn't remove, the federal government doesn't remove their funding because it's a good project. And they're thinking of doing, working in central California, I believe, doing a small little town with solar panels and all the hydrogen equipment. I do have a question for Jason about beautification. Are they doing the holiday lighting contest this year?
Yep.
Or I said, Michael.
Good evening, Councilwoman Quavis. Yeah, they are going to be doing the drive around. You're talking about the, yes, the holiday awards.
Any information? Has the little papers been sent out to...
I can, I can check. I don't have the dates on me, but I can, I can give you that information to the city manager and have him give it to the council first thing in the morning if it's okay.
No rush. I just wanted the, there's a couple of families that asked me because they haven't received their little letters. Normally, they receive a letter.
Right, right. We sent me those out. Okay, I can, I can get the address from you at the end and make sure, and then get it out for you right away.
It's on 149th, but I'll get you the address.
Okay, and I'll get you all the, the council, the information tomorrow first thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoffman-Gorme.
Yes, I attended the same event with the California Contract Cities Board of Directors at the Southern California Gas as well. And I would just like to say, I look forward to seeing everybody at our Angel Tree lighting ceremony and all through the following nearly two weeks of the sleigh going through Landale to greet all of our children. So take a look at the city website to see the route and to, so that you know what night he's going to be in front of your house. That's all I have.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
Looky here, all three of us attended the same meeting, the board meeting. Amazing. And then on the 16th, I attended the annual South Bay Cog Volunteer Reception and Torrance. It was really nice. I enjoyed it. And then I want to add an item, if we can, in January. You know, everybody got a raise here with the exception of one, I don't know if the individual went and declined or not. But the city clerk didn't get anything. And I looked, and the only person in the city that didn't get any raise or anything was a city clerk. So I'd like to bring that forward on the general meeting and see if we can bring her up to stuff, I guess you want to say, because the last time the city clerk got a raise was when Paula Hartwell was city clerk. So if we can, and add this on the agenda for January. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor Protes, where is it?
Yes, so I as well attended the South Bay Cities Council of Government Volunteer Recognition Dinner. It's always nice to see some of these individuals put in a lot of volunteer hours, and you definitely can't put a price on that. And then I had a follow-up question. I had asked, I think, a few meetings ago, and I haven't heard from staff yet about setting up the Homelessness Solutions Subcommittee. There was a recent L.A. County, not L.A., yes, proposition that passed. So it'd be a good time to explore if there's additional funds and the status of where we're at in our community with that. So I'm going to put that back on the radar for staff because I haven't heard anything. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. I attended actually the swearing-in ceremony for Supervisor Janice Hahn. If you're not familiar with Janice Hahn, who's the supervisor, at one time she was our supervisor here in the city of Landale. And even though she hasn't been our supervisor for a few terms, she's always has been available for the city of Landale. She's also a member of Metro. And so she has always lended her ear towards Landale. Of course, we differ on the Metro issue, but of course, as you know, Metro is a metropolitan planning agency, and they are beyond just the Metro Light Rail Project itself. But a lot of transportation dollars or what have you comes through the federal government, through Metro or what have you, and she has the opportunities obviously to vote on those issues as well. And so she's been a friend of the city of Landale, and so I attended her swearing-in ceremony. And it was people from parts unknown came to celebrate her last term in office. And so that was a good thing. This Saturday, I think it's this Saturday, our very own Holly Mitchell would be having her swearing-in ceremony as well. And we expect that to be grandiose as well in terms of all the locals within her supervisorial district coming out to celebrate that as well and hope to build up, you know, strong relationships with our board of supervisors members. Because as you know, even though there's a measure that passed that it's going to increase the board of supervisors, but whether it be seven or nine members of the county board of supervisors, they have a lot of authority and a lot of power, if you will. We have people that used to serve in Congress decide no longer to serve in Congress, to serve on the board of supervisors, not because of the authority that they have, but it just indicates, indication, if you will, of how the amount of authority that that board has. And if we can cultivate those relationships, I think that's advantageous for the city of Landale. So I want to congratulate both of them, Janice Hahn as well as Holly Mitchell, in their reelections. And I would be joining Holly Mitchell this weekend. I think it's Saturday, this Saturday. I did have one other thing, but I think I will save that. Yeah, I will save that, and I will, as they say, land my plane here. I've been waiting to use that phrase, right? Right? I don't know if it landed right, but... Okay, we do have one other, two other bit of business. Okay, we've got a closed session, right? And then we've got, well, two closed sessions. Okay, if you want to, if you want to split the baby. We've got two closed sessions. So we will ask the city attorney to give us provision of the closed sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it's Government Code Section 54956.9D4, which is potential initiation of a case, and then 54956.9D2, which is significant exposure to litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall return.
Well, I need to tell you, but I remember when. Are you guys cold?
Okay. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mary. As the council was briefed on both items of potential litigation, no reportable action was taken this evening. That's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, December 16th, 2024, in these chambers. It is now 7:57, and we are adjourned.
Did I bring him something?
No.